I didn't see you get to drive.
Yep.
Cool. Okay, thanks everyone. We are here June 3rd for a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We just have one agenda item, which is to go into executive session. So I will just read out that to get going. So going, we will be voting to go into executive session to determine positions relative to affordable housing development matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402 for E. And to hold a conference with the county attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pertaining to affordable housing projects pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402 for B. So I look for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to. Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't quite get. Okay. Was that a motion, Sarah?
Yeah, I said show me.
A second, second. Thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
Nothing.
So look for a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? So we are going to executive session. Sorry, I should say, I think for, for this. Let me see if I got the invite or, you know, people we're inviting in. So in addition to the commissioners, we'll have the county attorney and both deputy county attorneys Ruth Born and Melissa Decker and Chris Floyd, county attorney. I'll have two members of the Housing Authority Development Subcommittee, Chaping LeChance and Dan Northcraft.
And Anne.
And Anne's a part of that committee too.
Okay, sorry. I wasn't, okay. I had you down, but I wasn't sure in what capacity. So, okay. Anne Snyder, also from the Development Subcommittee. Then Michael Yurman, contractor, consultant on affordable housing. Jackie Wheelahan, the Housing Authority Director. Tim Bergman, county manager. And I believe that is it.
Okay.
And we'll keep the recording on, I believe, since we have folks outside the county. Thanks, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Who is?
I'd like to just preface that comment by saying, because of the Housing Authority Subcommittee folks being present today, it's not subject fully to attorney-client privilege. In the event that a topic comes up that y'all start to discuss that you're asking for advice on, I may say we'll hold off on that. Excuse our friends from the Housing Authority and then discuss those questions later. At which point in time, then we will probably turn off the recording if the conversation is going to be subject to attorney-client privilege.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris.
Don't have a way to get on wifi. The emails there, the Rubics.
Okay.
Do you want to send that, Eric?
Yep.
Sorry to.
Yep.
Sarah, we're gonna send you the, I'm handing out here. There's a grading in Rubics. So you get it. So, yes.
And sorry, I just wanted to say, just so we can keep moving, I think we do have a hard stop at 11.
Okay. That's great.
So that's.
Works great for me.
Okay, great.
So on Friday, you had three developers present, sorry. The budgets for the affordable housing development. And wisely, I think we have chosen to go out and tour all of the products. What I have created for you here, and we can email this, there's nothing special about, about these. So that you can, you can modify these Rubics however you would like. But I kind of wanted to create something that as you tour the different facilities, you have a way to start grading your thoughts. The second, the first thing I really want to get into real quick is just an update on, on the grant budget. So I kind of had a, I have to admit, I had a mandatory freak out this, is that this?
This morning?
No, this morning. On Sunday, when I was going through the grant budget, I was like, how am I off so much? And what I realized is that the grant did not have the hospital district site in it. So I was like, I'm like, I am, and it had been a year, you know, since I, I touched it. So it's, I want the commissioners to understand potential costs going forward. That were not included in the hospital district or in the DOL grant because the hospital district improvements were not part of that grant. That property was added. We updated that for the state to get additional density. And you guys obviously acquired it. I think it's a great site, but there's a sewer line. There is any remediation work, which will be capping the soils on that site. Again, it's relatively flat. The other one that's not in that list today that I thought I was, I thought I was okay with, but I'm not after I just toured the site this morning, is this, the electric and the gas aren't there. The electric that I thought was there is just a single pool over to a light. So there's no transformers or anything. So that's going to be, that's going to be additional costs, especially if we go underground as required. So, yep.
Michael, is that, that is the hospital site or both sites?
That's just the hospital site. We have the budget for the, for the Third Street site. So the 1.2 had that in there. So why, and then, and then, so for 20 units, the other big thing that has changed is that Parkville water tap fees from when we submitted went from eight to 11. And LeVille sanitation went from 8,500 to 15,000 per unit. That equates, just on the 20 units, to I think what I have in there. I don't have it for me.
Twenty-six thousand thirty-one.
Well, it's 190,000 just in tap fees, just in the increase. And then, so that, that's the, that's the bad news is that we're basically, you know, underwater as it relates to tap, just because of the tap fees alone. So.
Have we, have we, Parkville, their sanitation has asked for any reduction? Do you think that that's not at all possible?
I would highly doubt they would. We were talking about this before. Typically, they don't, the reason that they are struggling to waive tap fees is because their debt services relate, is tied directly to the income that comes from tap fees. And so unless they created some policy prior to issuing a debt service for their new facilities, then it's really hard. And that's my experience with my own utilities in Crested Butte when I had enterprise districts. We actually paid from the Affordable Housing Fund to the Enterprise Fund on every tap fee deferral that we paid. So.
They increased their taps with new infrastructure?
I have no idea why they, Jackie, do you know why they increased their debt fees?
Because they can.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Because maybe we could get somewhere where we're not true.
It's certainly worth the discussion, given the amount, right? But then the other piece of the puzzle is that I really want to be clear on every additional unit above 20. So we're talking, with adding the hospital district site, we're talking, you know, 24 to 26 units. Every additional one right now, I'm estimating is about a $42,000 increase on the budget. When you add in the service line, the tap fee, and then you also, the other thing that's not in there is the gas and electric costs for a new transformer or whatever. So it's not insignificant for us to increase density. At the end of the day though, I mean, we try our goals to put as many housing units on the ground, so it's just a consideration. The last thing I'll add, just as I realize that it's not all doom and gloom though, because you did receive, what, $880,000 from?
Eight fifty, we'll see. Tomorrow we.
We'll see. From the congressional, the congressional award you had for the site. So, I mean, I would, I would predict that we wind up using almost half of that to get the additional infrastructure we need to go to 24 units. If that makes sense.
What, is it easier for me to just chime in or raise my hand?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. Was, was that, Jackie, specifically for this project? I know you wrote that with the Housing Authority. I'm just asking because I'm wondering if that was the Housing Authority award. Need to ask the Housing Authority to assign it to this project? Was it at the beginning when this was intended to be by the Housing Authority, but now it's the county's project?
So yes, I have, I have asked the question if it could be done before we get it, if it could be rerouted to the county. But maybe it would just be easier for the Housing Authority to do a letter or something requesting that. I have explained it to multiple people that don't email me back. So tomorrow, we're having an informational discussion with HUD on how to access these funds. And it's not just going to be me, it's going to be all the awards awardees. So I don't, I don't know how that's going to go. But as soon as I get through that, I'll let you know what I learned.
So to be continued, I guess, is the, is the answer to that. But in all good faith, I think you need to know all the information moving forward of the current situation. So, I mean, we certainly couldn't move away from doing anything on the hospital district site. But, I mean, my hope is that we have 50 applicants for this housing project. And, you know, we're able to build it out and take advantage of getting a contractor mobilized. It's 50 grand is about in line of where I see most projects per unit on a subsidy from local governments for what it's worth. So you're, it's tracking, but those tap fee increases. Now, we do have $100,000 contingency that makes, in the construction budget. So depending on where bids come out, but certainly doesn't cover the whole thing. Okay, so that's the DOL grant update. So the next thing I want to get into is, I really spent the weekend really going through the three proposals. And on your Rubik's sheet, you see the top piece. What I, what I basically did was I went and I took what was the most comparable across-the-board model, which was a three-bedroom unit that all three produced. And kind of gave you some just breakdowns of where we sit with a three-person household, AMI, the gap in it. And then what I, what I consider these additional costs that are certainly going to come full force at us the second we go into negotiations. Because there's a lot of things that were kind of hidden in the proposals, which you have to tease out, which I'm used to doing. That's how you guys got me here. The, so going down the list, there's, what I would tell you is that when you go to visit each of these facilities, my, you can, you don't, you're not tied in any way to this Rubics. But to me, it gives you an opportunity to kind of take your notes, this is really intended for the BOCC, to, to think, what, the things that I, if I were in your shoes, I would really be thinking about. I gave 30 points to affordability and then 10 points to each other's subcategory underneath there. Certainly, if you have other things you want to add to this Rubics, 100 points isn't like some magic number. But it does, you know, it does give you a good, you know, academic score, I guess, if you wanted, if you wanted to stay in the academic realm. But let's start with the, just general things that I want to point out to, that I saw in each proposal. Solution builders, you know, I think number one, it's really important for us to be paying attention to the, the final finishes in these. They were not apples-to-apples at all. The sightings were not apples-to-apples. And so there's some things that I think because of your climate that you're going to have to have to make these units durable for your owners. A metal wainscot was on, was on fading west and wasn't on the others. My experience, and I would defer to the three behind me in the back row. But my experience is that when you have snow piled up against the side of a house for six months of the year, if you don't do a metal wainscot, you're going to just lose siding every year and have to repair it. We were required to on everything I did in Crested Butte. So that, that add-on would certainly be an add-on. They did not, they, what was very frustrating to me when I was going through their proposal was they just assumed the Third Street site was flat and that we were going to put in a giant retaining wall. That retaining wall is not in our budget. So that is an expense. And actually, fading west is the only one that actually put in a retaining wall into their proposal.
Can, I'm just looking at retaining walls listed under the fading west column.
Uh, they have it as an add-on. I'll get to that, I'll get to that, I'll get to that here in just a minute.
Michael, what, with the V cup and the mediation, will we be able to, I mean, does that have to like coincide pretty tightly with the spill removal and putting in a retaining wall?
Yeah, we, we certainly, we have $150,000 for the site in the grant for Third Street. And so depending on how the site is carved up, I guess my point in saying on solution builders, what's frustrating to me is they just acted like the whole site was flat. And if you looked at fading west, for example, they actually priced out the two places they would need retaining walls versus what the other two builders did, which is completely ignore the fact that I specifically called out how you're going to do a topography in the, in the proposal. So, so I was a little, go ahead.
Is it possible that we do the retaining wall and that's all crap?
Yep. Yep. No, I think, I think, I think we, if we move forward with one of the, if we move, well, if we move forward with any of these, this summer, we should be putting in that retaining wall. We have more in engineering. If it's over three feet and it requires it to be engineered anyways.
Yeah.
Four, four feet? Okay. If it's over four feet, it needs to be engineered anyways. So we have the engineer on, on, on retainer right now. So now would be the time to do it. And we have to, any of that excavation that comes out, we got to deal with anyways. So now's the time to deal with it. And I think it's the case in everything. Roof pitch on solution builders is a really big concern of mine. Maybe I could be talked out of that from the three in the back again. But those flattened roofs are going to hold snow. And at a certain point, barely a big winner, snow removal off those roofs is an expensive for a future homeowner. As well as whether or not, if they could only even do like a slight modification, then you probably are looking at hopefully going to a metal roof, which I think is a little bit probably easier for them to do because they could just put metal on in the factory. But at least then you have the ability to that roof to slide. So those are upgrades. And then the last one I would just put in there, their flooring was okay. But the quartz countertops compared to fading west versus laminate countertops. Again, on a homeowner should build those, that, that upgrade to quartz is something that I always look at because it's a huge benefit to the final owner. So I, I think it's an important one. Overall though, I think they did the second best job of really getting into what their actual costs were.
Solution?
Solution builders did. Yep. They, they, because they did, they did look at what their vertical costs were. They, I mean, you can go through their list and they have in the landscaping budget, they have a road-based budget, they have in transportation. The other, the other thing I will say, when you look at the price per square foot, one thing that they don't have in their add-on cost is going to be construction financing, which can be very significant. And it's something that I think we really need to tease out to ensure that I understand correctly that they will not need a loan. Go ahead.
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
Okay. So as you, again, when you go to the factory and you guys are touring that, that's a really important question. Like the questions, if I'm in your shoes, are what's it going to take to increase roof pitch? What's it going to take to put metal roofs on? And what are, what are our cost upgrades for, you know, trying to get these finishes to, to where we want them? Again, you have, they are the only one that has a, to the positive on their affordability gap. They have 26 of the positive on that. But you can see, the last thing I'll point out is, you know, fading west, who I think sharpened their pencil the best. Their total development is 9.1 and you have 7.4 and seven, or 6.9 for the other two, which tells you something, somebody, somebody didn't do their homework. Because fading west 9.1 had in retaining walls, had in the parking areas, had in, had in all that extra stuff. So I think that's important to know. I mean, there's three units in there too, so you have about a million extra dollars in fading west for the extra density in there. But you're still about another million in, in costs there. So that, that is solution builders. And I guess, well, because I want to keep us on track. Is there anything else that folks want to add from your, especially from the Development Subcommittee, on your impressions on the proposals from solution builders? They did have forest air, which I liked, their HVAC. I thought their HVAC systems were, were going to be a little bit higher quality.
It's all single-family, less set and stitch. Perhaps if, you know, they may have two-story, two-story single-family, but less set and stitch, set and stitch timing and potential issues, you know, versus townhomes, whole thing to be considered.
I wonder if it's, I know we're tight on time. I don't know how much you want to negotiate with them, but maybe a paired home or a small town home is the right. I mean, you've got the set and stitch issues, but I think the other two went back and said, here's our duplex or here's our townhome. So that might be worth some exploring with them. They have one side that has no windows, right? So that would be pretty easy.
I, on your point, Dan, what I would say with this group, again, I'm being real honest. I can work from where I sit as your consultant. There's not a single one of these three proposals that I don't think I can get houses dealt with. Where I'm like, I'm worried that they're not going to perform, which is a huge thing. So with this group, what Dan is talking about, I actually think they would actually really go to, put it to task to do duplex designs. Because they want to get involved in that communities. And they have to build duplexes if you're going to build up here in the long run. I also think that it will potentially allow them to look at their trust systems and do the trust systems on site when they stitch.
You could reduce some costs that way. Just ask them for some shaft liner in between, something like that.
Yep.
I guess I, Chaping, Dan, do you have anything?
Nothing else on the solution?
I'm going to just say the lack of construction financing is certainly a strong aspect.
Okay. I saw Sarah, I saw your comment. Yeah, they just, they slide.
Yeah, I would be really worried about like requiring, I don't know, I'm not, I wouldn't be a fan since we have so, we want to put so close. And I don't think any of those spaces between the buildings, whether they're a single-family home or duplex, it would be like functional winter time. Thank you. But.
Well, my experience in Crested Butte is they're not. Like your sides, yours, I mean, in fact, I didn't build a single unit in Crested Butte that didn't have the upstairs living. Because once the roof slid for the first, after the first storm, you couldn't see out the bedroom windows downstairs. I mean, that's my, that's, I mean, I'm guessing you guys have a pretty similar, I mean, they got 300, Crested Butte average is 300 inches, but that's where I'm taking that from. We can, we can talk about it. I'm really concerned though, Sarah, that if those roofs don't slide with like the two 12s that they have on those, those buildings right now, that what's the alternative is someone's going to actually, they have two options. They can pay someone to go up there, or they're going to wind up on a ladder up there by themselves. So that's even worse.
So, I mean, I've only done one metal roof. We ended up doing snow guards on that. I think you could get by with asphalt. I think you should increase the roof pitch because the 212 is ugly. But with an asphalt shingle, I think you'll be fine. I mean, you could, on a, what is that? On the interior dimensions, like 14, six span or something like that, like you can get a roof truss that'll do 95 pounds per square foot. Like, um, of all the things that I'm paranoid and worried about, we're falling in, is not one of them. Like I think the trusses are well-designed enough that that's not something, I have, I, other things keep me up at night. I got to put work in construction.
And that's fine. If you guys are okay with asphalt singles, in Crested Butte, it was a mandatory, you had to do metal roofs. So we wanted the roofs to slide. But that's, that's your guys' community versus us. So. And I actually, and then Sarah, the one thing I would add is if, 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 if we go with what Dan just talked about earlier and pushing them to do duplexes, which I think is the right decision, when there's blank walls, we would have more, we'd have more space between buildings. That's part of the reason to do that. So. Anything else on solution builder?
Sorry.
Yep.
A couple other two-bit opinions. We, I don't know what their siding type is. And maybe it depends on if you have metal roof or not, and if it slides and there's snow up against it. We have not run into any issues where the snow sitting against the siding has caused problems. I think what we found is the house gives off enough heat that it, you know, there's some snow melt up against the siding, but a little gap develops. So you could potentially save some money that way. And, I mean, I guess these are comments for all of them. We're, we're doing quartz countertops as well. I don't know on this if we want to say the block can do laminate, like there's some decent laminates out there.
My, my gut is that we should price, we should at a minimum get a price to do the quartz countertops. It is, for saleability for us is going to be big. And my experience between, the difference between laminate and quartz is very little now.
I haven't looked in a while.
I would, again, at the end of the day, we want the buyers to have something that they want to take care of. So.
I think, so my last thought on solution builders and maybe all of them is, I guess, solution builders in particular, I don't feel like they tried super hard on the design. So I think if that's a direction you guys want to go, I would go back at them and say, tell me about paired homes. Can we get a little more creativity than this? Can we not have parking all across the front? I mean, I think Oakland knows pretty well how to do, so I can't remember who I'm to. But Oakland, part of solution builders, I think they understand how to do affordable projects. So there's some more levers I would press on them to pull to make this better. But their price point is good.
Yeah, I agree. They didn't try very hard on the site planning, even after we had a second meeting with them to tell them to make some corrections. They didn't necessarily respond. Like they didn't even need to setback, the side guard setbacks for the zoning code. So I, you could push, you could definitely push on that. Last thing I would add, so the two, the two, as we, so the nine housing issues that I would add that are positives. One is the construction financing. If I, again, if I'm understanding correctly, they don't need a construction line, which would save, which is actually probably the difference in the price here. And two, the other big one that I think Jackie and I both feel that we were impressed upon is they have the resources to assist the Housing Authority in the lottery, the marketing, and bring the things that will bring buyers to the table versus the other two groups that really don't have that in-house like kind of system already. So they even had like the, you know, first-time homebuyer group that, you know, they, they could join and talk about. And I also like the fact that they also, you know, on the, you know, trying to be a little bit proactive on their warranties stuff. So, and just so you know, no matter what, the one-year warranty is just like a, is an industry standard. So.
You're talking about solution, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So going to the, so with that, that's that one. So going to Adamburg. I think I got probably most annoyed this weekend by their proposal. And I'm being real blunt here, but I, after I really dug into what was in their proposal, number one, they didn't do anything. I mean, they did nothing to improve their site design. They just said we could do whatever, which is like, we gave you $5,000 to come in here with some, some ideas.
Yeah.
Of how to lay out the site. And then again, they treated the site as flat. But the bigger one that I thought was, that really upset me is when I actually started looking, so I was in Denver this weekend. And I started looking at what they're building in Denver versus what they had for those single-story ones. And if you read in there, those are vinyl, they have vinyl siding on those houses. They have vinyl floors. They're not even like, it's the cheapest floors, the cheapest. So there's a reason that those houses are showing up, those four single-story ones are showing up at like amazing prices because they're mobile homes. I mean, they are not, they have not, they have not put any effort in talking to Bonneville about what is it going to cost to get these up to like a, a nice standard. So I think when we go back and we, hey, when we talk about them, I think when you, when my, my encouragement with the BOCC, what I encourage you, when you go to those sites, the stuff in Denver is different than what they're quoting. And you need to be asking the questions, like you can see the questions here of saying, what is it going to cost to get our finishes to be like that house in Denver? How are we going to get, how are we going to get the smart side and the stuff, you know, like the comparable sightings versus vinyl siding? Like absolutely, under no condition would I do vinyl. Like absolutely, under no condition would I do vinyl siding up in the mountains like here, you know? So those are the types of things that I think we need to tease out of them, and then they would, I will require them to resubmit. All of these will need to be required to resubmit pricing with the upgrades. So we have, so we can know what exactly before you make a decision. Their construction financing is going to be a, a cost, for sure. They are going out to external, we're gonna pay construction interest for duration of their project. Uh, and then last thing that I kind of, after Google touring their projects in Denver over the weekend, they don't really have a, a big project. So I'm actually, I walked out of here on Friday feeling like they had the right team to do the local piece of everything. And I left my house this morning, or left my fiance's house this morning thinking, I don't know. So I'm, I'm really interested to, again, I won't be there with you on Friday. I'm gonna go on Monday and do the tour on my own with them, uh, cuz I gotta get on an airplane on Thursday afternoon. But, um, I, again, these questions that we're talking about today are really important for us to tease out of them. Yeah?
Michael, what do you mean, they don't have a big, big project?
So everything I saw on their references was about four to six to maybe eight units. They didn't have a twenty-something unit project. And then the other thing I'm concerned about is, is their construction financing. I mean, when you look at the amount, it's probably more like in the eight point five million is where these are gonna wind up being for construction financing, cuz again, they don't have a lot of their costs in, in here. I'm just really concerned about their access to capital. Because the projects they described were working with like the Elevation Land Trust, which is a great model, but the Elevation Land Trust, again, has contracts and their supply, they, they do a lot of the backend stuff for them. Not again, like I said, I've done it. I am more than happy to be, be here and do that for the county as we go along. I can certainly assist with getting to Chaffa and the Prop one two three and all that, that's what I do. But I think there's gonna be a lot more handholding from my end, which again, I work with them, but it just, it's gonna be a lot more. I also think for Jackie on the marketing piece, we're gonna be doing all of it. I don't think they have anybody on their team that's gonna help Jackie with marketing or anything. Again, that's part of what we gotta figure out as we move forward. Anything else on Adamburg?
I was just clarifying, for the, you know, they have a project in their portfolio, West Holden Place project is sixty-seven.
That's a, that's a multi-family apartment.
That's a multi-family apartment. You're saying, and they haven't built that, yeah, okay.
Under construction, yeah. So there are two, I think they, two multi-family that they have just gotten contracts that haven't been approved yet.
Yeah, I think they're.
Anything else for like one, two, three, four?
From what I saw, I think their projects, they've successfully demonstrated that they can build a house. What I think, the reason I left with a salty, almost with a salty taste in my mouth on this is, I really am upset that they did not, they gave you, they gave you price points and did no homework on upgrading those from just a double wide from Bonneville. And Bonneville would have easily, I mean, that's, that's what they do. I mean, it would have been, it would have been a half-hour phone call, conversation with Bonneville to say, what's your price for quartz? What's your price for this? What's your price for that? Which kinda makes me like, if you're not willing to do that for this, and I paid you, I paid you five thousand dollars to do that. So that's why at the end of the day, I was a little upset about it. Again, I, I think they do have, they do have the resources to pull from Denver from the, from the labor side, if they get in a pinch, which will be, which, which is a plus for them, so.
Do you have any concern about their factory being Bonneville and not having control of the factory and it being a state?
Actually, Bonneville, of the three, has, has Westwood used as Bonneville.
They, they did a couple. They did a couple of fading west, and then they did a few stick built, and so they pulled from several different places. So Westwood is not on Bonneville.
Okay.
I think Westwood's primarily Bonneville and.
Maybe primarily, we think.
They've been, I mean, I haven't gone out and explicitly asked them, but they made it sound like they were pretty happy with Bonneville. But it was, the factory was maybe less new and nice than fading west, but they knew what they were doing, putting stuff together and they felt they were, so.
What I would add to that is, is that they've gotten the product to Bonneville, that's probably.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah, cuz solution builders hasn't gotten the boxes here yet. That's why.
That's true, right, cuz for him, that's, that's true. That's, did they increase that roof pitch? It's gonna make their transportation costs more challenging, if in fact they can even perform, right?
I, I actually, there's no way that if they, if we do, we all, they're, they're all gonna have to, they're gonna all gonna drop trusses and do the roof soon on site. I just, again.
That's what Westwood does, yeah.
Yeah, I, I hate to say it like this, but I, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a big miss for this group not to require typical roof pitches. There's a, there's a reason you have a history of roof, you have a reason, there's a history of six twelve plus that you're in this town. It's not because people wanted to build nice roof pitches, it's cuz you guys get snow.
Well, that's a cross amount range in six foot.
Yeah.
Unless you get an exception, generally.
I mean, you get, you get, yeah. Um, so that, that's, but again, I think they, flying trusses and stuff like that, I don't think is, I mean, it's, it's an extra week, from my experience, is an extra week of onsite, but they, everything comes on the, the trusses come on a truck. And it's just, it's putting a roof on, so I don't know. I don't see that as a big deal. Again, you know, just the biggest thing about it is when you're there on site, um, really be pressing on, did your proposal have this finished? Does your, do those single wides have this, you know, wood finish, the board and batten that you showed us? Cuz it doesn't seem like it did. Uh, and then the other one is their flooring, the vinyl flooring versus the kinda engineered flooring now that they are too do nowadays. Like, I'm kind of a little, kinda perplexed that Bon, that Bonneville hasn't upgraded their flooring from vinyl, because that's, the flooring, flooring products from the last ten years have just drastically been improved. So I'd be surprised that Bonneville doesn't have that option, but again, when you go through their spec sheet, they have vinyl flooring as the, as the flooring.
Can I, I appreciate Dan has kinda made that inquiry, uh, independently. Can we follow up? Not only ask Adam to, like you said, get, get that appropriate pricing for quality increase, but can we reach out to K W to kind of tease out more of their experience?
Yeah, I'm happy to reach out to Kyle and ask questions.
Yeah, we can do a reference on that.
One other thing, and maybe this applies to solution builders and Adamburg or both. One of them had in their proposal like six or half dozen, maybe eight, like local contractors, and it looks to me like they just had some preliminary conversations, got their logo off their website and stuck it on there. Like, I think both of these guys are going to be surprised to find out how difficult it is for, to get local work done, and maybe that's a, they can bring some, I mean, I, handful of my guys come from Denver because it's just, it works better. Um, but I think both of them should see how, if they understand how difficult trades are in the mountains, um, and what their plan is for that, and see if that passes the sniff test.
Yeah, I agree, Dan. I think, you know, I think they were trying to say that, that's impressive, but I think we all know a little bit better. If we can get local folks, then great, but I do think we should make it clear to them that that's very challenging, not like.
Yeah, plan on getting some.
I don't think that should be an expectation of ours to only use local, and it can.
Yeah, I, I do, I, I do think the one benefit is, is that, again, I wouldn't get into what the next step's gonna be here in just a second, but they do have quite a bit of runway to, all three have a longer runway, cuz they're not breaking ground till May, the next year. So they have a year to, and, and again, to your point, Dan, local trades having six months notice that, or you know, being able to kinda know that they're gonna be on one site for twenty-five is probably the difference between being successful in three months, asking around for three months.
But I think it's helpful, I think you still gotta hold your breath till you see it work a couple of times. Cuz there's lots of people say, oh yeah, no problem. It's like, feels like this can be a problem now, which we're all inside.
I agree. Um, anything else on these guys? Okay, so then last one, fading west, uh, they had the biggest gap, but that said, they, again, in my opinion, they did the best job of actually really looking at the site, making sure all of their product would fit, and how it would be placed on the site. Uh, and it's really hard for me to ding them for giving us true pricing versus and being over than the other two, after I really looked at them, and not. They will have the construction financing as well, which will add to this cost. Uh, and the only other thing is that my experience with fading west has been on these types of projects is you have to one hundred percent tease out every single cost and get, before we would go under contract with these folks, because I am not gonna allow them to do change orders in the midstream, which is, I've seen them kinda do as they're MO. They get under contract and they say, oh, you want heat pumps, oh, you want that, and they just kinda, and, and there's no, there's zero fluctuation once we have buyers under contract, cuz if, if the price changes, then that is not gonna be on our buyers. It's gonna be on everyone sitting in this room, cuz we have zero, we're not gonna be able to tell someone they're buying a house for this price and then tell them, oh, surprise, it's ten thousand more, cuz there are already gonna be questions straight ahead. So, um, but that said, they, they did. The other thing that I think was interesting that Jackie actually kinda brought up was they did, they did provide a one-bedroom unit, and one thing that, you know, their, their most expensive units were those ones that had the underground garage. And actually Jackie brought up to me yesterday, I actually think we would actually have more buyers that would rather just buy a underground garage with a single-story unit above, like a one-bedroom. Like certainly when I was in my twenties, that's exactly what I wanted, was a garage and a, an apartment for myself. So those eighty units could actually supplement those four hundred and eighty thousand to do on the steeper hill, on the two sides of that steeper hillside and do two, like two duplexes. I don't know what you guys think about that, but I think, I think for buyers in this community, I think we'd actually find four one-bedroom buyers that would love to have a garage, a one-bedroom versus a three-bedroom, three-story unit, that's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, cuz there's flexibility going into the needs, seeing the needs assessment size.
Yeah. So it was an interesting one, because I was, there's four eighty units where it's like, ooh, I don't feel good about putting a D restriction on something that you can, that's more expensive than what you can buy in town. Like, it's gonna be a really, I don't think, I don't think we'll sell, that's not how it is. And so I would, I, I kinda was in a little bit of a bind on how we were gonna deal with that with them, because we weren't gonna sell those units at that price point, cuz I also can't get the Prop one two three funding for that. But if we do them as a one-bedroom, I can, we can even get an hour fifty-five thousand, because we'll be at that, you know, we'll be in the AMI tech category for one-bedrooms. So anyways, that's just a thought on potentially just using their design a little bit more. But, um, so that's, you know, so again, if you, if you go through here, take this with you if you want, if you wanna take your own notes and then put it in here, but the way I, you know, this is really small boxes, you can, you can figure it out. But at the end of the day, uh, so when we come back and it's time to make a decision, the three BSCC members are the ones that make the decision. And so I, I don't know if the three of you wanna talk about how you want to look at, try to look at them all in the same lens, or if you guys just each wanna come up with your own preference and then see where, have your discussion, see if you guys are in alignment. That way, I don't wanna direct you on how you should make your decision, but this certainly elays, what I, again, the stuff on the side here, though, please be thinking about when you're touring that, because these are, these are the things that matter. You're not tied to the lowest bid. You're tied to what is gonna be the best project for your citizens, at the end of the day.
Michael, can I offer some notes on fading west?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, so two, two, I have two categories of comments. Just one is regarding their fading west rail yard phase three project, and then the second is just regarding, um, my experience and the housing director's experience in Breckenridge regarding their fading west fifty-two unit multifamily project there. Um, so just first regarding rail yard phase three is just considering that, that fading west has site control over the approximately ten acres in the third phase of rail yard, and that infrastructure is, will be wrapping up like the installation of the infrastructure for Mountain View Drive. That'll be finishing up here, um, this, this spring and summer by, by John Luthnager, and then rail yard will have, or fading west will have, um, you know, site control, and they can pull the trigger on developing that property whenever they want. So just in terms of economies of scale, you know, if we're bringing a fading west project to, to Letville, that gives them a little more incentive to build out phase three. But at this time, that there's no D restriction in phase three in terms of affordability. So there's something to keep in mind there. Going to the Breckenridge project, um, so that was fifty-two units of multifamily public-private partnership. I talked about it all day, but I called their housing developer, their housing director, um, a couple weeks ago to ask about her experience. This, this is Lori Best. She's consulted the regional housing authority before, um, cuz I worked on that project up until completion of entitlements, and then came here, um, when they were starting fabrication and construction. Um, so her, so, you know, personally, I had mixed experience with their team, that they had good architecture, that they had very poor site engineering, site planning, going, going all the way through entitlements. Um, but after I left, Lori said that as a fabricator, fading west got an A-plus in terms of fabricating boxes. She said they were great. Um, I, I've typed up my notes and sent it to, to Jackie, and she can share it with the BSCC. But generally speaking, they got, they get an A-plus on a lot of the things. The only issue in terms of fabrication and delivery was that when they stacked the boxes on site in bulk on a vacant lot, um, even though they were wrapped, because they were stacked, there was a monsoon, like a lot of the boxes got flooded inside. There was a lot of interior damage. Um, she said that probably would have happened with anyone who did that, but just a move. But what we should really push them on, if, if we're talking with fading west, is on, um, you know, they communicated they're fully vertical and they're fully in-house. We should ask about that, because two years ago, they were not. Um, and they, they said they were, and then they ended up using an architect outsourced, DB Studio out of Denver. Um, they got a C, um, in terms of they were good factory drawings, but not good site planning. And then in terms of their GC, their general contractor out of Evergreen Symmetry Construction, they got a B minus on that. There's just a, a ton of issues. The set in stitch was horrendous. Um, so those are just notes on previous experience with fading west. Again, um, you know, great as a manufacturer and probably lessons learned on, on shipping. But we need to push on, you know, what they're communicating is being vertical, uh, fully vertical and, and in-house. Ask questions about that.
Fair to, um, talk with them and understand if, uh, would help mobilize rail yard phase three, if there's any efficiencies or if they would think about.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, the, the, what I would see is, and, and I would, what I would say is that Chapin's experience, I think, is a lot what I heard from other references on fading west on their initial. But I think they, again, I think there's been some growing pains with them. I'm, I'm just glad we're not in the first rounds of them. I think they've learned a lot, um, cuz I had dealt with them out in K Carson, um, and they've, they've definitely improved their ability to deliver, but their first couple of projects were rough. That was just the general consensus. I think, I think if you check their references, like the, the newer projects that they've been doing, like the one that they did in Bonja, and the one they did, John Caddles, who they referenced in Gunnison. You know, I worked, worked with John all the time, so I'll certainly be getting in him a call and asking if he's had any issues. But I think they, I think they've matured, and I, and I do agree with Chapin, like they didn't originally have an in-house piece, and so we need to figure out if that's, if that, how that's gone.
The other note was that, you know, they, they say that they're fully vertical, but their site plan was drawn by the same, by the same draftsman that drew for another one of our respondents. Um, it was, um, I'm trying to think it was. Yeah, yeah, Mountain Dykman. So some, so somehow their, their draftsman for their site planning is being done by the same person as another company. Um, so if they're fully vertical, then how is that happening?
Yeah.
I guess I, I guess I'm also asking, I'm sorry, there's an answer to that question.
No, go ahead.
I guess I'm also asking, is there a way to work together county and city to offer an incentive to fading West to reduce their costs? If mobilizing for their site could be, um, some overall costing to run?
I think we've done everything we can, Sarah, to incentivize them. I mean, we've, we're going in and we're putting in all the utility work. We're doing excavation for them, for our projects. So they're, they, 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 I mean, your, your price point for these units should be significantly lower than what they're able to do them in the Rayleigh Art for. Does that make sense? I mean, we're doing TAF fees, we're putting in utilities to the property lines. I mean, they're, they're coming in and digging foundations and putting in love. They wouldn't get that with, with the city right now because they're not D restricted. So, um, the one thing I would add on this is that, you know, we, if, if we're able to, we're gonna be able to get these, I mean, if you look at their current twenty-one thousand over affordability, if we get prop one, two, three on a hundred percent AMI, we would actually sub, we'd be able to drop that price point by fifty-five thousand in a unit. So, um, I will say, don't be thinking that the state adds so much additional extra cost to, like, they're gonna require, they're gonna require fifteen percent contingency that's in the budget, which drives me nuts, cause they're gonna add, um, like eight hundred thousand dollars of costs that I'm gonna have to use their money to cover. So it's like, they gotta figure something out, but that's not here or there. Um, alright, so then the last piece, so I know we got a hard stop at eleven, so I wanna be mindful of that. So I just wanna talk to the commissioners about the next steps here. So my suggestion, um, as we continue on negotiations is, it sounds like the tours will be wrapped up next.
The Friday, so we'll do Thursday in Denver.
And Friday.
And then Friday at fading West.
So, um, at your next meeting then, what I would suggest we do an open session is that you instruct me and Jackie to read, to have the both, to, to go back and have all three contractors revise their bids. And to add on any of these additions and clarify where they're at. Um, and we can discuss, you know, like with fading West, for example, does instead of doing those four eighty units, let's see what they can do to units of one bedrooms over garages. And see what those, how that affects their pro forma, et cetera. So those are examples that you can instruct us. And we, we certainly as a group, the, the development subcommittee will be drafting a memo with recommendations. So don't feel like it's only on you to come up with that list. We will provide you with our own document list and then the commissioner certainly can add to that. What we need to get to though is at the end of June is a decision. And your decision is this, your decision is to go in under contract for design, not for construction. The construction con- contract is going to come later, but we need to get them a design stipend uh, in our architecture fee to prepare the, the plans. So when we have them revise their bids as well, we're also gonna require them to tell us how much it's gonna cost for them to get to, what, ninety-five percent on, on building plans? So, um, there'll be some final, some final adjustments that they'll need to make on those plans, but we need to get there, uh, by the end of July. And so they, they're, we have a month to put that together. And again, because it's all modular, I'm not overly concerned about that. But we need to be able to move forward with the, the horizontal construction for the sewer lines and the water lines and excel entry to pay for those costs this year.
So the work, there's a work session next week for them to, a formal action would be the eighteenth, which is so close for them to respond. I'm wondering if we could do something, uh, giving direction on the eleventh, because that gives these three applicants or proposers time to address their concerns and they'll be fresh from a site visit.
So do they need to be in formal meeting to give direction on revising bids?
Uh, at least in the, a work session or something. There has to be something to give, cause it's, it's discussing a, a.
Sure. So then I'm asking is can they do that, do that in the work session? Cause they're not making any action?
Yeah, cause it's, you're not making a decision. It's just to give guidance to staff. So that's fine.
Yeah, we can certainly get you guys a memo by the.
Guide the way.
Yes.
I'm out on the eleventh, so I'm not, I'm not gonna make those work sessions.
Would it be okay to provide us with email?
Yeah.
With any email concerns? Cause I, and I think we can ask for a pretty quick turnaround. Again, it's, it's, I don't think anything we're asking for is major. It's, it's, um, you know, like what's it gonna cost for courts and what's it gonna cost to, to get, for you guys to think about? I will push, I mean, um, on my side of things, I'm gonna be pushing on solution builders to what Dan has said, like, how much flexibility is there within your team to actually design a duplex?
Yeah.
And, uh, with fading West, it's like, we wanna see those three bedroom, two baths to be one, you know, one bedroom garage, garage units, like the ADUs and see what they, what they think. Uh, and then with Adamberg, it's like, give us, give us true pricing, like what's it gonna cost to, to put real siding on these things? The flooring, to be engineered flooring, you know, not hollow doors. Um, we don't wanna buy middle homes. And the other thing that they had on their proposal too, they were using Indie dwell, Indie dwell doesn't exist. So. So there, there, there were one, there's the shotgun units, there's Rainy do all units. And I, and between, for what it's worth, I really hated Indie dwell units. I, I was working for the Economic Development District down there that's out of Buffalo. And so they were like, that's the greatest thing since light spread. They didn't, like, they didn't have built-in closets in those things. Like they have vents between bedrooms. So like, you could like see through the bedroom.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, I was like, I can't put anybody in this that comfortable. Like if you get a kid and you can, you get your kids conversations online with their teddy bear.
That was solution?
Yeah, but they, they're using Bonneville now, so. But I, my point is, is that on those proposals, those images, those images are Indie dwell. So those.
On, on, I'm sorry, on Adamburgers or Solutions?
Adamburgers, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
So if you go in his proposal, the image that he shows of those one, one story units, um, yeah. Yeah, these.
Yeah.
I'm also wondering, um, would it be helpful for us, and we might not have time today, but, um, it seems like giving a little more direction as far as the layout of the site, whether we want front door or back door or, or back from the back, like, should we try to push one way or another? I know it's kind of a.
I would stay out of, I would stay out of that for now for the, cause again, what I would, again, you're trying to get to that level of detail to get to where we need to go is gonna require weeks of design, which you as commissioners need to be thinking. Cause this, again, the nice thing is, this is all modular. So you need to be understanding what the boxes and delivery is gonna cost. Because regardless, any of these kind of like retaining walls or stuff like that, they're gonna be costs that you're gonna see for many of these groups, right? So, um, my feeling is, were you, if I was in your shoes, I guess was my way of looking at this, and I mean, if I'm in your shoes and trying to make a decision, you really, what you really wanna be able to say is, okay, these all have comparable levels of finish now. These all have, these all have, you know, these designs have been vetted and I'm comparing this price point versus this price point for this price point. And again, at the end of the day, it's like, who is going to deliver best for your residents? And that's, that's, that's why I want you guys to get to, because then it's contingent on me and working with Chapin and working with the design committee to come back with a pro forma and design. The housing needs assessment's gonna really inform a lot of like the bedroom counts, Sarah, and we don't have that info. So, the soil tests are being done today. Good news, the hospital district site was decent soil. So I don't think we're gonna have any major surprises. It was sand and then a little bit of clay once we got the frost out, out there. So, um, so I think we got good percolation and I don't think there's gonna be any expenses. We'll find out on Third Street here in a little bit. So I'm gonna go over there afterwards to look at the bids.
Hey, Michael.
Yep.
Maybe it's worth asking Adamberger and Solution Builders if they have a one bedroom ADU sort of thing as well. I mean, I think maybe using one to subsidize the other on fading West is okay, but I think their price point is, even with all the inclusions, I think their box price point is concerning to me. So if we can get a better deal out of the other two with a similar feature, you know, similar model. And then I guess also Jackie, you could ask Kyle about fading West. They did, I don't know, maybe four of those for fading West.
So we've hit eleven. Make sure we have, so we had a hard stop. If there's any other questions that we need to talk about today. So again, when you do make your decision, just remember you're making a design decision and the risk to the county is gonna just be that, those design costs.
Yeah. I, I think if it, I mean, I think Sarah and I are, are more, or I don't know about you, Sarah. I think we're a little more flexible if we wanna keep going. How, how had the hard stop? I don't know about you, Sarah.
I'm flexible, yeah.
Yeah. So we can trap up a little more calmly.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I think, um, again, the, you know, just keep in mind that the next, what I, what, what I think is really important for the commissioners is just this process for you is being done in a way that if you, if you, your next decision point is probably gonna cost you roughly seventy-five thousand dollars to move forward. Right? Cause that's gonna be your architectural fees. So before, and then at that point, once we have design, we will have true costs and we will be putting that into a contract, the construction contract. And then as well as the other big piece that, the most important thing for the commissioners and your responsibility of working with your, your legal staff is that we will need to guarantee surety if we have to transfer land assets. And we'll also have to make sure that we get the D restriction recorded against the land prior to any kind of transfer. So we have, that will happen this fall. Once we get to the, to the actual design, we have actual costs, because we will be putting in there penalties for not delivering on contracts and et cetera. So they're going to, they're going to lose their profit first before they lose anything else. And then we're also gonna have, hold a executable, whatever credit if we transfer the land to buy the land back if they go anywhere close to default.
Gotcha. I had a couple of questions, just in terms of our thinking, just wanna make sure, like, um, when there was some discussion of asking different builders about being flexible on exactly what units get built, like when, I mean, I guess a couple aspects of that. One is just I don't wanna make sure that we're comparing apples to apples in terms of the unit mix. But also like, I mean, how do you, how do you ask them that? Cause at some point you need to lock that in, right?
So they, they did response. When I was asking that phasing question.
Yeah.
I asked every one of them, what was their minimum amount of units?
Yeah, but I was thinking more, it's like, if we're like, oh, like we don't have any buyers for the three bedrooms, can you switch to building two and one bedroom? Like I imagine that's gonna, I think, at, at some point that's easier and some point that's harder.
So the way it works out, so that's a great question. It's a, it's a process question. So the way it will tease itself out is that Jackie will do a pre-qualification for two months of the lottery. And when people are putting in their names, they'll be saying, I, I'm putting in for a three bedroom. I'm putting in for a two bedroom. And so if we see that there's only like two households that are putting in for a three bedroom, then we'll have to do a, you know, we'll have to shift.
Yeah.
But the, again, where I'm at on that, Jeff, is again, if, because these are in stick belt, they're modular. It's a, it's a, it's a trading in and out, so.
Yeah, I think it was also more sort of like, how does that affect their, I mean, make sure we understand how that affects their sort of pricing, their bid.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then I guess the other thing was, I mean, a lot of our discussion was around things that weren't on this rubric. And this rubric is really helpful, but like a lot of it was around like, did they talk to local subs? Did they really talk to local subs? Like, you know, what, how mu, and, you know, I think a lot of the discussion was to the degree the three applicants had put in the time to understand what they're getting into. So I mean, that, I mean, to me, that's a totally fine scoring criteria, right?
Yeah, and I think if you look on the rubrics, there's a line item down below. Uh, it's, uh.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, it's on there.
Okay. Gotcha. I didn't flip it over.
Sorry.
Fantastic.
So there, it's on there. Maybe we should weigh it more. I agree with probably Dan, that's probably, that's probably a little bit more weight. So do you guys wanna give that twenty points? And again, there's no such, there's no special thing to the numbers.
I mean, there's that, I mean, there's that practical aspect of, yeah, have you worked in the mountains? Do you have real relationships with subs? Like I was impressed, like, you know, solution builders had taken the time to what seemed like have some, like, pretty in-depth discussions with Jack Saunders, like, for, you know, that, that's to me scores way higher than what Adamberger's group did, where they had gotten, you know? So, and then, um, yeah, and then also sort of similarly, like the different applicants had take, done more or less work on actually thinking about the site and like how things would fit up here. Um.
Like I said, you know, I, I think when you meet with each of them, my hope is that B O C C, what I, what I've seen through this process is what, what typically happens is the three of you will probably have your top two that will rise to the top. And then there'll be a discussion of like, okay, what do we really wanna go with? And, and again, I'm being sincere in saying, and I keep saying this, but I'm being sincere, I, I can work with any of the three. To get there, I do think from, from a staff perspective though, you know, there's, there's certain levels of, like the, there's.
Yeah.
I think fading West has a much better understanding of the local environment versus solution builders actually being able to sell the units and have a marketing department. So it's like, which one, which one is more important to us? But, um, again, at the end of the day, it's part of what we have to pick up on the backend to make sure the project's successful.
Yeah, and on, if I can ask on solution builders, I mean, I, I was, their proposal was interesting to me, cause it seemed like, I mean, they were honest about it. They're, this, they haven't really done this before, but they said, but were really committed to getting into this kind of work. So it was like, okay, that's good that you know, you know, that you know this is gonna be some new, um, you know, attributes of the project. So I, I, I mean, I appreciated that honesty and that they seemed interested, but I was, I was curious if anyone sort of had heartburn or I, I, I like, like, like how honest that or genuine that.
Well, they've, so I can just tell you from my experience, cause I've worked with other clients, they've, they have been very aggressive in pursuing other RFPs.
Yeah.
And I think they're, every time they do this, I'm seeing that they're starting to learn a little bit more. And they're learning that the master plan community isn't what happens in these smaller towns of the, in the resort communities and that they're having to design, design product. And, and so I guess it's like, I'm not, I am, I have done this enough where I am, I think I can easily work with a big firm like that and get to like, no, 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 you need this.
Not the cookie cutter.
Like you, you gotta, you're gonna have to do this, this and this, and you're gonna have to put the roof on when it gets here and plan on that. And like just, just like those necessary steps, the architecture design things that they need to like, you know, like the cheesy, some of the cheesy stuff that they can get away with in Denver isn't gonna work here.
Yeah.
So, um, but again, I, I think I've never been to their factory and I've never seen them. So I'm really interested. Like I'll be, be there with you guys on Thursday. Um, and then like I said, uh, I would love to stick around, but I gotta, I gotta jet at, literally jet to D I A for a wedding, but I'll go to Adamberg, uh, on, on Monday, on my way out to do other site visits. So I'll have my own opinions on both. And then again, I think, so then on the eleventh, this is the development subcommittee. I'll get you guys something on Monday, um, after I see Adamberg. And then we can, we can kinda come into the work session. And you guys can certainly give me your initial impression. So you guys won't be flying solo without a, you'll have a, you'll have a, you'll have a written memo that's public from the development subcommittee on Mon, or on Tuesday for your work session.
And just to give you your itinerary, um, we need to be at their factory, at Solution Builders factory. I'll send, have an invitation. We need to be there at nine AM. So it's an early start in Denver. Then we'll do Adamberger at two PM. Um, and his is just gonna be join some homes. So we'll do a factory and some homes with solution builders up at homes in the morning. And then one PM for those who have not seen fading West, um, on Friday.
Sarah, it looks like you had some.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry if I didn't quite track you, Michael, but it seems like, um, regarding like infrastructure pieces, where you got a better summary of that for us?
Yeah, sorry, what was the first part of that?
Like, the, as far as the infrastructure and the hospital site plan and all those things, would we have some better idea of those total expenses?
Yeah, so, um, I'm, sorry, there's, yeah, well, I'll send you the memo.
I sent it, Sarah.
Wait, did you send this, sir?
I got the, I got, okay, I got the spreadsheet.
No, there's a, there's another memo on the, that I summarized the costs.
Okay.
So I'll get, I'll get it to, I'll make sure you get it, sir.
So we, so we do have that?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, I see that, okay, I'm sorry, you did send that to me, I didn't.
So that, those, those, those costs, I'm fairly comfortable with. The only one I'm not comfortable with that wasn't in this memo after today's site visit going over there is, so Chapeen, um, there's like a attached curb sidewalk, it's like two feet, it's like a giant curb that's crumbling in front of everything else in front of there. You said that we have, we don't have to put a sidewalk or curb in there in front of eight, sorry, in front of the Sixth Street, right?
Correct, there, yeah, there's not a requirement for, for infill development for a curb, gutter sidewalk.
And it wouldn't make, it wouldn't tie in, right? It would wind up flooding the hospital, I ended up with a curb in front of there.
Um, yeah, that would only be required if there was some level of subdivision inside, like a town hall plat, where, you know, right-of-way dedication, you know, like a, like a, uh, graveyard project.
Yeah, um, so yeah, Sarah, that, that, the only other cost that isn't on here is that I, I thought I had recalled that the, the, um, electric behind there was like a full three-phase or two-phase going across the back, it's not. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have Excel energy costs as well. Uh, gas is in the alley, so the gas is gonna be relatively cheap. Gas is just cheap to extend, but the, the trans, the price, the price per transformer is about, I'm guessing, depending on our density again, you can normally run about two units per transformer and it's about thirty grand a transformer running around. That's what, oh, I was paying.
Um, Chapeen, that one percent account from Excel, I can't remember what that's called, but the one hundred thousand that went to the rail yard, is that banked up? Is that, what's the balance of that currently?
You say that.
To the city.
Could you repeat this up?
What?
Could you repeat the, the one per, she was asking that this is a one franchise fee from Excel?
I hadn't been involved with that.
There, there was a, there's some account that, um, the city dedicated four hundred thousand for infrastructure from Excel from this, from that franchise fee or whatnot. I wonder what the balance is on that and if we might be able to put a request together for the city to contribute that to the project.
I can, yeah, I can find out, but that hasn't come across yet.
Chapeen said he'll look into it.
Thanks. Um, so then the, all the other things, do we wanna ask them, do we wanna list that? Like the quality, the site design, the unit design flexibility and the marketing and peripheral support? And then the finance pieces, do we wanna give all that to the three? Before we visit, or?
No, I think what we're gonna do is you guys are gonna do your site visits, the, the stuff on that rubics. Again, you can use the rubics if you want, I'm like a, I, I can't sit there and take notes and do, do the site visit. So I personally wouldn't use a rubics myself, so I don't want, you know, but I wanted to give you guys things to think about on that rubics. What I, what we'll do at the work session, Sarah, is the staff will provide a initial list of how they need to revise their bids and then as well as your comments from your site visits. And then we'll take that and I will issue a, it won't be like a, uh, just catch-all for all three. It'll be a direct mem, or a direct request to their bid revisions for each company. So we will instruct them that they have, they have a week to revise their bids based on these following things that we saw that we want.
When, I know you said it, when, when are we trying to do the work session?
Uh, on the eleven. It's your regular work, work session, and we'll keep it short and, and, well, I'll, I'll come prepared with a list for each one.
Well, that's okay, just in the way, okay, great.
Okay.
Thanks.
It's a lot of busy your work session, so. How much, how much time I keep taking? So, alright, um, anything else from, like, are we good on the contract piece and how we're gonna move forward, like the two-step? Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the other thing that's not on here is architecture fees. You know, we will, we will get a proposal for the costs on architecture fees for each of those. Again, I would strongly suggest that we look to the congressional, hopefully, funding or whatever, but. I, I, the reason I would say that we should pay for architecture fees is we control the process. Versus if they, if, if we compensate them for, if we compensate them for architecture fees and then we decide we don't wanna proceed, we compensated them and we have no obligation. Versus if we don't do it that way, then, so that's my, that's why I would, I would do that way. It, it just gets, again, it takes, it's worth the seventy thousand dollars to relieve yourself of the risk of not having to move forward. It might, which is a small risk on a nine million dollar project.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, so, I'm out.
Tracy.
Yeah.
We need to note that Hal left at eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I will say that more clearly into the microphone, um, Hal had words had to leave at, oh, sorry, Sarah, did?
No, I just, we're not, we're not, we don't have to come out and make an emotion, right?
Yeah, to come out of executive session, yes.
Fair.
So go on and.
But we're not, we're not making any other motions, right?
No.
Correct.
So no decisions are being made at this time?
Yeah.
This is just informational.
Sarah, you wanna go for that motion?
Oh, um, I'll move to come out of executive session at eleven sixteen AM. Um, and just to note, Commissioner Edwards has left the meeting at eleven.
Great, I'll second.
Uh.
She's on her way.
Cool.
Hi.
Hi, okay, we have exited executive session and just waiting for the clerk, eleven seventeen.
Yeah, she's on her way.
Yeah, so the three of you guys, I'm just putting in a four points, you know, you just.
Kind of too long?
Okay, um, Tracy's here, so we, we're good, yeah. And just so you know, we kept the recording going the whole time, unfortunately.
Make sure Tom tells them I love them.
Yeah, yes.
I'm ready.
Okay, um, we exited executive session at eleven seventeen AM. We did note, um, Hal Edwards, Commissioner Edwards had to leave at eleven for another meeting. Um, uh, so, and, and no decisions were made, it was just informational with the commissioners. Uh, and that was all business we did, so I think we just need to adjourn our special meeting, which we will do at eleven eighteen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Sorry to drag you out. Thank you.
Forty-five seconds.